Hi and welcome to B News Weekly. I'm Lynda McNamee in for Phil Gallagher. Joining me on this week's edition is B News Director Rich Hosford, as well as B News reporters Tad Stefanak, Chris Flaherty, and Robert Paris. The whole world has responded to the death of Minneapolis resident George Floyd with demonstrations against police killings of African-American citizens. Locally, Burlington Police Chief Michael Kent also condemned the actions and inactions of the officers involved. He spoke to B News Director Rich Hosford, who has this report. Let's take a look.
In the wake of the May 25th death of African-American Minneapolis resident George Floyd, after a white officer was videotaped kneeling on his neck for eight minutes and 46 seconds, there have been reactions across the country. Protests have erupted in many cities and thousands of people have taken to the street to condemn his death and the history of African-Americans being killed by police. Many political leaders have also condemned the actions of Officer Derek Chauvin and the three officers who stood by without intervening. Even leaders in police agencies have called out the actions and inactions of the officers. This week Burlington Police Chief Michael Kent joined me in a video meeting to add his voice to those condemning what happened in Minnesota.
Probably one of the most egregious thing I've seen in almost 39 years in policing. It was painful to watch certainly, and I don't think I've heard anyone say anything different frankly, in policing and any other type of profession. And sadly, people tend to at times paint with a broad brush and it's a black mark on policing that we're going to have to do better to move forward from.
On Friday, Chauvin was charged with third-degree murder and second-degree manslaughter in the incident. I asked Chief Kent his thoughts on the charges.
You know, I think it was appropriate. I know there's some controversy whether it should be first degree or third degree, and I'm not sure how it works in Minnesota, so I can't really comment on that. And you know, I think people were upset that it took a couple of days, but I think probably the officials out there just wanted to have their i's dotted and their t's crossed. You don't want to take the chance of down the road, losing a case on a technicality.
Finally, the other three officers, Tao Theo Alexander Kuhn and Thomas K. Lane, have been fired by the Minneapolis Police Department, but as of Tuesday evening have not been charged. I asked Chief Kent his thoughts on their action and inaction.
And one of the most troubling things in watching that video, in addition to the officer actions, is the inactions of the other officers standing around. You know, this whole thing could have been avoided. All he had to do was go over and pull him off and Mr. Floyd would be alive. And you know, who knows what state this country be in right now? But they did. Inaction is inexcusable is the action itself, in my opinion.
A quick update. Since the time I talked to Chief Kent, the charges against former Officer Derek Chauvin were raised to second-degree murder, and the other three officers were charged with aiding and abetting murder. We will have a full show on this incident and how Burlington Police Officers are trained to interact with the public and other local responses next week. On Video Conference with Chief Michael Kent, I'm B News Director Rich Hosford.
Rich, the annual town meeting where such big decisions as passing the town budget and approving capital projects for the various town departments is scheduled to be held next week. However, since social distancing is still the new normal due to COVID-19, the plans for the meeting are very different than normal. B News Director Rich Hosford spoke to Town Moderator Bill Bayer about the situation and has this report.
A meeting that includes such big-ticket items as the annual town budget and the various departments' capital projects will look quite a bit different this year due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The biggest change is that it will be held on Varsity Field, and rather than beginning at 7:30, will kick off at 6:00 PM. Also, the seats for members and presenters will be spaced six feet from each other, and rather than pass These measures are being undertaken to try and keep everyone safe and healthy while conducting the important work of the town's legislative body.
As we've been working with the Board of Health, so that you know, we want to make sure we do what they think is needed. We're going to be asking everyone to wear a mask when they show up. I guess according to what I learned from the Board of Health, once everyone is seated at six feet away from each other, they can remove their masks. When people get up to speak at a microphone, I'm going to ask them to put their masks back on. Yes, getting the town's business done is very important, but keeping everyone safe is more important, and that will be the prime directive of this whole event.
Mr. Bayer said he is asking town meeting members to do as much research as possible before the meeting to limit the number of questions needed to make decisions. But, he added, "It is important for members to be able to get all the information they need from town officials."
I mean, I certainly don't want to sidestep the ability of people to ask questions. That's the basis for the whole meeting. But if we can get some things taken care of beforehand, then we're going to try to do that. And in the aisle, we will place microphones on stands. So instead of trying to pass microphones like we typically do in a town meeting, we will have people go up to the microphone, not touch anything, and just speak.
Finally, nobody knows how this is going to work out, and everyone is being asked to be patient and roll with the bumps in the road.
I mean, it's obviously, it's going to be different, and I'm not exactly sure how, obviously, how the flow will work. We're going to start with the most critical articles, obviously, the operating budget and other critical spending articles. And we'll see how far we get, and we'll see how this works. If it works reasonably well, then maybe we will come back on the following Monday. If it doesn't work very well, then maybe we will get as far as we possibly can, get the critical things done, and potentially postpone the rest until the September town meeting. I mean, it is important for us to get the town's business done. But if this approach doesn't work very smoothly, then maybe we'll have to rethink it.
On Video Conference with Town Moderator Bill Bayer, I'm B News Director Rich Hosford.
Rich, and thank you, Mr. Moderator. Phase one of Governor Charlie Baker's reopening plan has been put into place. That means that some institutions have started to reopen. That includes Burlington Town Hall, which saw employees who have been working from home return to work this past Monday. B News Director Rich Hosford spoke to Town Administrator Paul Sagarino about employees returning to work and the future of Town Hall reopening to the public. Here's a clip of that conversation.
Today, we have all our employees invited back in. We really have done a lot of work between John Sanchez and the Facilities Department, MIS, all with the approval of Susan Luminal and the Board of Health in order to, you know, set the office up to comply with the CDC safety guidelines as moving forward. So we're really happy to have our full complement of employees back. Still going to be a while before we figure out the opening to the public. That aspect hasn't been clarified yet by the state, but you know, we've had great people in our building servicing the residents throughout this pandemic. So we're really proud of those employees that have just been showing up every day to keep the town running and service residents, albeit in different ways typically than face-to-face. So today's the first day back, I'm sure, for everybody. I'm sure that, you know, we'll have to work out some kinks, individual kinks within offices and stuff like that, but we anticipate that.
As things continue to reopen, we will bring you the latest updates. Stay tuned to B News for the latest news. Burlington's town election is this Saturday, and though they aren't on the ballot, there are two write-in candidates for a vacant seat on the Shawshin Tech School Committee. Burlington residents Kent Moffett and Mike Kelly are both running for the seat and asking residents to support them by writing in their names. Moffett is a father of a daughter in Frances Wyman and a son that will start the school next year. He said he sees Shawshin as an important resource for the town because of the opportunities of vocational technical education it offers to students. He added that he believes he can provide the leadership and advocacy that Burlington needs due to the commitment he has to the public service by serving on the Town of Burlington Scholarship Committee, as well as the Conservation Commission. He has also served on the Young Alumni Council for the University of Massachusetts Lowell, as well as the boards of several nonprofits. Kelly said his focus is to be a voice for residents and students from Burlington who attend Shawshin, and that, as an alumni, he'll bring an insider's perspective with him to the role. He added that COVID has put great burden on students and staff, and that it's placed a logistical burden on schools from the potential format of scheduling classes this fall to maintaining social distancing with school transportation. The safety and well-being of students is his foremost concern as the school looks toward returning to a semblance of normalcy. You can find letters from both candidates on our website at bcattv.org/BNews. Take a close look at your mail and do not accidentally throw away federal assistance funds by thinking they're an advertisement. Those qualifying for a COVID Economic Impact Payment, or EIP, might receive their money in the mail on a prepaid Visa debit card issued by Meta Bank. EIP cards are a Treasury-sponsored Visa-branded prepaid debit card that provides a safe, convenient, and secure way for EIP recipients to access their economic impact payments without having to go to a bank or credit union to cash a check. The funds of an EIP card can be applied in a number of ways, from in-store debt transactions to mortgage relief. So take a close look at the photo, and if you receive one of these cards, hold on to it and don't accidentally throw it away, as it could be your relief during the COVID-19 pandemic. The class of 2020 will be giving their last hurrah during the graduation procession following the commencement ceremony. This Sunday, B News reporter Robert Paris went to find out more about the plans for this post-graduation festivity and has this report.
The teachers and staff at Burlington High School are getting ready for the upcoming graduation ceremony for the class of 2020. As we all know by now, COVID-19 has made ordinary plans a challenge for many high school graduations. The team at BHS had been organizing a special graduation procession after the ceremony.
It was actually one of the senior parents brought up the idea initially, but I think we're all on the same page that we just wanted to be able to do as much as we could for the senior class, because obviously, you know, there was a lot that was taken away from them and their year was cut short. So just being able to do this little bit of an extra event for them seemed like a good idea, and everyone was on the same page.
Come out and support the seniors of the class of 2020.
It is being held June 7th, which is the day of graduation. Obviously, people are more than welcome to stand along the route and kind of cheer on our seniors. That would probably be the best way, and then hopefully that should be done around 7 o'clock, and the kids will all come back to the school for one final like cheer and goodbye, and that's the plan.
I'm Robert Paris for B News Weekly.
Thank you, Robert. You can watch the full graduation ceremony on BCAT on Sunday. Find out all the details on our website at bcattv.org. As summer approaches, many residents are likely wondering how the plans for the Parks and Recreation Department activities are shaping up during the pandemic. For the latest news, B News reporter Robert Paris spoke with Department Director Brendan Egan about the summer schedule, Celebrate Burlington, and Concerts on the Common. Let's take a look.
As we await phase two of the reopening of Massachusetts, the Burlington Parks and Recreation Department is working hard to keep everyone safe during the COVID-19 pandemic. This week I spoke to Brendan Egan in another edition of the Parks and Recreation COVID-19 update.
You know, we have put signage out in our parks about physical distancing, as we've talked about. You know, we also have some park ambassadors, we call them, out there. They're kind of our front line, you know, walking through the parks, making sure people are following the guidelines, you know, staying off the playground and fitness equipment and off the basketball courts, which has been really difficult. We just ask for your patience. We're hoping that in phase two, there is something that some of those guidelines come out that the restrictions on playing, those things loosen.
Governor Baker has released the guidelines for Parks and Recreational Facilities.
You know, there are some restrictions. The guidelines put some pretty tight restrictions on what we can offer, and we're going to go program by program and see, you know, how they affect each program and really make some decisions. We may be canceling some programs.
As for the Concerts on the Common, the department continues to look into the amount of residents they can have at this annual event.
You know, it's going to go to group sizes and how we do that. We have a plan. We've asked the Board of Health again for some further guidance.
There is no confirmed date for Celebrate Burlington. However, on the town website, it says it has been moved to August 13th, and the department has clarified on this.
This is not true. I can guarantee you that Celebrate Burlington will not happen on August 13th.
Lastly, Brendan is looking ahead to the next reopening phase as we continue in the month of June.
If we are able to get to phase two, and it's been three weeks, hopefully that phase three will happen in three weeks as well, which means less restrictions and maybe we're able to do more for certain summer programs. So, you know, we are hard at work trying to make sure that we can offer summer programs.
I'm Robert Paris for B News Weekly.
Thank you, Robert. Earlier this year, the Town of Burlington was designated as a green community. The program is run by the State's Department of Energy Resources and offers incentives in the form of grant money for communities to seek more energy-efficient buildings, vehicles, and utilities. When the town joined, it received $173,000 in an initial grant and became eligible for future competitive grant money. One of the first big green projects undertaken by the Department of Public Works will be to upgrade all of the lighting and fixtures to LEDs in 12 town buildings. This project cost was estimated at just under $500,000. With incentives from Eversource, the town was able to get all of these upgrades at zero cost. This project will kick off right at the beginning of fiscal year '21. The buildings slated for upgrades include the Public Library, Fire Headquarters, Town Hall, Town Hall Annex, and the Human Services Building. Master gardener Peter Coppola is back for another growing season and has expert advice for preserving and maintaining a viable water supply. B News reporter Tad Stefanak has this look in the latest Eye on Nature.
Time of year to make your garden grow, and Master Gardener Peter Coppola has tips to help make your water use responsible and sustainable.
Next time somebody asks you why you grow vegetables at home, show them this. If they were to say to you, "Well, what's the big deal? I can buy asparagus that size at the supermarket." Well, then show them this. You can't buy these at the supermarket. I planted this asparagus bed four years ago, and I have never watered it in all four years. It's a perennial. It was planted. I prepared the soil, put the mulch down, and walked away. I haven't done anything here for four years. You need to focus on and understand your soil. That's the first rule of water conservation, know your soil. So here we have three soils. We have a clay soil. This is sand. And then this is a sandy soil containing organic material. So let's just take a quick look. If I pour water, it just sits there. And it takes a long time for it to get absorbed by the soil, but in the meantime, it's going to run off away from where you're trying to water. If you have just a sandy soil, water quickly disappears into the soil. If you have a soil with a lot of organic matter, then the water will go in. This disappeared immediately. This went right in and is being absorbed by the organic material that's in the soil. This is still sitting there. So if you're planting something like this, you're making a big mistake, and it's going to take you forever to get this soil wet, and you're going to waste a lot of water in the process. So this is what you're trying to accomplish. The other thing is invest in a rain barrel. This is something you could purchase from the Town of Burlington. It collects the rain. It fills up. This is 50-something gallons. It collects the rain. It fills up. Pour it out as needed. It's all normally would just be wasted and go into the soil, but if you have the rain barrel, you can save it and use it on your container plants. You can make your own. I have another rain barrel behind me that I made from an old barrel and a couple of dollars in some plastic fittings, and I have another rain barrel. One other thing to look at is your hose connections and your spigots and everything around the house. You hook everything up. You get it all set up. You need to check for water loss. And I have a situation here where this fitting is leaking. So if I turn it on, you see the water coming out? That's wasted water. The only thing that's getting wet here, pile of soil with nothing growing on it. You don't have to go out and spend $35 for new hose. All you need to do is spend a dollar for a replacement coupling and put it on the hose. I receive a lot of questions about how to make my lawn greener. Why can't my lawn look like my neighbor's lawn? How do I get a nice plush dark green lawn? And I keep saying, "Why bother? You need a ton of water. Why don't you do what I did and dig up the lawn and get rid of it?" This was to be a big area of grass. I could never get it to grow nice, so I finally said, "The heck with it." I took all the grass. I moved it to the center of the area to create these planting beds. I let the grass decompose in place. Then I brought in some plants, used some compost incorporated into the planting area, put the plants in, put the mulch down to reduce evaporation. I don't water out here now. I never come out here with a garden hose. This is all operating on its own. This is now two years in the making. I'll continue to put some perennial flowers in here, but this is it. No watering, no fertilizer, no pesticides.
Stay tuned to BCAT throughout the summer and the growing season for more tips on making your garden grow.
Thank you, Ted, and thank you, Peter. The BHS Athletic Department held a virtual athletic awards night for the class of 2020 to honor student athletes. B News reporter Robert Paris has this report on the festivities.
U.S. Athletics wasn't holding anything back for the class of 2020. Despite many new restrictions and guidelines, the show must go on. Every year, the Athletic Department holds the annual Athletic Banquet for athletes from the graduating class. However, this year, they had to think outside the box.
It took a lot. It's funny. I thought virtually it would be way easier. There's no crowd, no people coming in and out and things like that. It took a longer period of time for us to get the slides ready and things like that, because we wanted to make sure everybody was represented well. But you know, virtually, I think it's the best it could have been.
A number of coaches from the teams paid a visit to the ceremony that day.
Probably the emptiest feeling I'm sure that all of our student athletes have had. Really, we're on uncharted territory, but I really just want to congratulate all of them. You know, our senior class and our baseball program were a special group of kids who were together for a long, long time, and I know that they were really looking forward to, you know, an exciting senior year, and I have no doubt that it would have been a special one.
I feel really badly for these group of athletes who did a great job for Burlington High School in their four years, and we want to honor them, just like we usually do.
We're trying to recognize our athletes like we have in the past, because they certainly deserve it, and they've earned the recognition.
Some of the graduates had an opportunity to drop by during the ceremony to receive special recognition awards.
I feel very grateful for it. I know that it was definitely challenging trying to play in an event like this that can't go as normal just because of everything that's going on, but I'm really grateful. I think it went really well, and it was definitely very special and something that I'll remember.
So I just received the Scholar-Athlete Award, and I'm so excited to have received it, because I feel like it just goes to show that all of your hard work can pay off, like not only just through sports, but also through school. And so I'm really happy just to have my two worlds collide and have received this award.
I was actually pretty surprised about my award, but obviously, really, really grateful. And in general, I'm really grateful for everything that I've got to do over the last four years. My teammates are my family, so overall, I'm just really thankful.
It is an acknowledgement of my hard work over the past four years. I really appreciate it. It also comes with a little scholarship, so it's nice.
Just received the Red Devil Award. It's just exhibiting outstanding school spirit, sportsmanship, and hard work for developing not only myself, but the people around me.
Lastly, BHS is always willing to help the students, especially during this time of uncertainty.
We have a great community here. We have, you know, a great support. Our kids support each other. Our administration supports each other. It's a very family feel here, and it's tremendous, and it starts at the top. You know, I mean, like I said, you know, having a superintendent and assistant superintendent who really support athletics and are part of what we do, and a principal who was a player himself and understands what it is and what players go through. And you know, that goes a long way when you have such a tight-knit group of administrators who care so much about these kids.
Obviously, I miss high school sports. Those are awesome. High school is pretty simple, so probably get complicated soon.
Definitely tracking my friends. Spent all four years running with them and competing with them. Definitely going to miss that.
From Burlington High School, I'm Robert Paris for B News Weekly.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you, coaches, and good job, athletes. Gyms and athletic clubs won't open their doors again until the state reaches phase three of Governor Baker's reopening plan. So residents are looking for alternative forms of exercise. A new trend in Burlington and beyond is running down every street within town. B News reporter Chris Flaherty has this look.
While businesses in Massachusetts begin to reopen, gyms and athletic clubs remain shut down until phase three of Governor Baker's reopening plan takes effect. Until then, residents are looking for new and innovative ways to stay in shape. Chris Bigler of Burlington recently completed his quest to run every street in town.
I belong to a bunch of different Facebook running groups, and one of them saw an article about a guy who ran every street of San Francisco in about six weeks, and it sounded like a cool idea. Didn't really think too much about doing it at the time, but a few months later, when I was looking for motivation to run, it occurred to me. I thought it'd be a good idea to try to run every street of Burlington.
Having just moved to Burlington, Bigler said this challenge was not only great exercise, but a great way to get familiar with the town.
I had moved to Burlington in August of 2018 and had just kind of been running the same loop over and over again for a few months. A big benefit of doing this was I was new to the town. It really helped me to learn the different streets of the town. And being out and about with my wife, she'd ask where to go, and she'd be surprised at my knowledge, and then she'd remember that I'd run every street, so.
This challenge is not exclusive to Burlington. Alan Folds, moderator of BCAT's election coverage, and his wife Ace have also completed the trek through the town of Reading.
I was injured, so I couldn't run, so I was walking. And walking just didn't have enough of a challenge for me, so I had to come up with something. And I realized that I was finding new areas to walk in. So I thought, oh, I might as well explore all of them in Reading and start checking off streets.
If you're up for the challenge, a bit of advice: planning your route is the key.
When I first started, I just kind of did it haphazardly and would pick a random street and run down it. And then I found as time went on, I was kind of running the same streets over and over to get to new streets.
I would just go out and pick a neighborhood and run it. And I thought I was doing an awful lot of repeating, because you have to just... So just a little bit of pre-planning. I would skip certain streets I knew I would pick up the next time.
We have a really great resource at Town Hall who is in charge of all of our GIS mapping. So if you look at the website and download some of the maps there, you can find everything you need for mapping out a strategy.
Burlington or Reading, this exercise is a great way to connect with your town and discover new parts of it.
I've lived here for 40 years, been very wrapped up in all kinds of things in the town, but there were parts of the town I'd never been to. I was amazed to find out some of these streets that just didn't, as far as I knew, didn't exist. So yes, I have a completely different appreciation of how things are connected.
It's nice now when I meet people and they say where they live, I know where it is.
I think it's a town that has a lot to offer, and it has its residential-type areas, but also the commercial and retail at the mall. So it was fun to see all the different sides of the town, and I think as far as towns go, this is the best I've known a town in my whole life.
Until next time, this is Chris Flaherty for B News Weekly. Until next time, this is Chris Flaherty for B News Weekly.
Thank you, Chris. Another week, another photo to highlight. This week's photo is one of the scenes of summer we've all been waiting for. It was sent in by Denise Ajuski-Hash and shows her dogs Benny and Rosie enjoying some 80-degree weather by the pool. Seems likely they will be spending a lot of these summer there and even going on swims. Thanks for the photo, Denise. We'd like to see your photos. They could be of your stay-at-home activities, shots of your pets, the coming signs of spring and summer, or just the weather seen from your own backyard. Whatever you think is interesting and want to share. Email your photos to bcatt@bcattv.org with the subject line "Photo of the Week." And since we had no community calendar this week, I do want to bring one item to your attention. On Tuesday, the vigil, um, the Burlington Interfaith Clergy Group is organizing a vigil as a peaceful, socially-distanced show of support for Black Lives Matter and all who have lost their lives to police brutality. They will be standing 10 feet apart on either side of Cambridge Street, on the sidewalk along the Common and along Simons Park. Please bring your own sign and wear a mask. They will be lining up at 5:30. So if you can, please consider joining. More information is available, um, definitely on Facebook, but I'm sure BCAT will also have that information as well. So that's, that's it for this week's of B News Weekly. I'm Lyndon McNeely. Have a wonderful and safe week, weekend, and I'll see you around town. Good night.